Good morning. I'd like to call to order for February 2nd for supervisor meeting. Please.
Supervisor Carroll.
Here.
Supervisor Elias.
Present.
Supervisor Miller.
Here.
Supervisor Lopez.
Present.
Chair Robinson.
Here.
Let the record show all members of present.
Please rise and report for the invocation of the alderman, Reverend Steve Peplinger, embracing cult of his culture, the pledge of allegiance to follow to be led by Supervisor Miller.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Let us pray. Holy One, you have been made known to us through diverse religious traditions over thousands of years. In each of these varied wisdom face, we have experienced you as a being centered in relationship, one who longs to be connected with us and who urges each of us to live in relationship with each other. We are called to be in right and loving relationship with each other, to live in respect and care for one another, and to bring full dignity to each other, to work together to create your beloved community in our midst. This morning, we give thanks for the opportunity our county board has given us to reach out to our friends across the border to help create this very relationship. We give thanks for the proclamation that will declare our intention to be in a sister commitment with our friends in Puerto Penasco. We pray that this reaching out will bring a lasting sense of connection between the people of our county and Puerto Penasco, and that it will mark the beginning of the end of the metaphorical and literal walls that stand between our two countries. We also pray for vision for this board, that they may see that if we are to live into your dream of this beloved community, we must consider the needs and concerns of not only the human members of this county and the world that surrounds us, but also the coyote, the mountain lion, and today, the groundhogs, and all elements of your sacred creation. As they consider multiple decisions about land in this county this morning, may their desire to protect and care extend to everyone and everything that is a part of this beautiful place in which we live. This morning, we ask for your loving presence to stay with this board throughout all the discernment they will undertake. Be with them as they consider new ways to develop and nurture your community in our county. Help them to make sound and bold decisions that will unite all of the people of this county and bring each of us closer to one another, to our neighbors, and to the land in which we reside. May they work together to create that relationship for all of us. Give them the courage to be creative and fearless as they consider new possibilities for our future. Finally, let us pray that each of us models the vision of the caring community that we are working so hard to create. May we always have the strength and the compassion to respect and bring dignity to each other in our deliberations even when we disagree. May we honor one another in our difference, creating the very community you have image for us.
Please join me in the proclamation.
.....................................................................
Reverend, thank you for the invocation. It's very beautiful. Appreciate your reference. We are now going to move on to pause for pause, so I want to introduce you to Officer Escobar and to Laney.
Good morning. My name is Mike Echo Barker, and I work at the P. Animal Care Center, and today I brought with me Laney, who is a two-year-old female pit bull mix. And she was found on the south side on school grounds just a few days ago. She's been in our center just less than a week. But she's got a great disposition, very sweet. She does get along with other animals. She's been around small and large dogs. I introduced her to a couple this morning. Does very well. So I haven't seen any issues with her being around animals so far. She is leash-trained, and she enjoys treats. She knows how to sit on command, which is great. And she was already spayed at our center, so she just got spayed a few days ago. She's been vaccinated. She's been microchipped. So she can go home today if anybody in the audience is interested in adopting Laney or knows someone who is interested in her. Our center is located at 4,000 North Silver Bell Road, and will be open today from 12 to 7. And our telephone number is 724-5900. And Laney's adoption fee is $14, and she carries a $16 license fee. So it's not a bad deal. $30 for everything. And I have to report that last meeting's dog, Doc, if you were here at the last meeting, he was the large white American Bulldog. He was adopted, so thank you to that meeting. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Officer. We have one change to the agenda. On the agenda, page one, item three, economic development and tourism contract for the U.S. Park Foundation. County administrators recommending the contract being withdrawn at this time. We dealt with the issue at our last board meeting, so if there are no objections, we'll sell them in the agenda. All right.
Do we draw the item correctly?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
We're fine?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Then let's move on. We're going to actually do, move to the agenda quickly for a presentation, proclamation. Item one in the agenda, presentation of a proclamation to Mayor Ernesto Kiko Munro. Proclaiming that Pima County, Arizona, joins with Puerto Penasco, Sonora, Mexico, to form a sister region. Let's pleasure the board on this side.
Chair, I'll move the other.
Chair.
Motion and a second. Any objections? Hearing non. Motion carries. I think accepting on behalf of the mayor is Ruben Sanchez Lizaraga, who is a coordinator of economic development and tourism. I'm going to ask Supervisor Carroll to make the presentation, and perhaps Supervisor Rupoe did the presentation. You might want to share with us your experiences last week.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, first let me say thank you very, very much again to Reverend Steve Cutler. That was nice to mention. The region and the opportunity that exists for us to be better collaborators. It's time, as your namesake from St. Paul says, to think anew in the afternoon. And I'm grateful for you being here and blessed this occasion. The important thing that happened, I believe, is, first off, this was an idea that was produced through collaborations with Felipe Garcia and the Pro Mexico Group. We had great assistance from our staff, John Moffett's staff, assisting with the economic development department, especially with the Curacao Bala. I want to say that we arrived, there was, first, my wife and I both attended this exchange. We did not spend any taxpayer money doing so. We did not charge any kind of anything for my wife and I to be there. So in the end, I wanted to make sure that was clear because we wholeheartedly believe in the goodwill effort that's being made here, and we wanted to participate early as much as we could in helping. The proclamation obviously states out many goals and objectives that we'd like to meet with this relationship. As stakeholders in the region, I think first and foremost, our best message that we could have sent out was that Rocky Point is a very safe community to vacation, invest, and to do all types of other activities. And it's going to be soon, hopefully, a port for major tourist destination. But at the time, it's in its growth as an economy. They have a new vibrant young leader. In his first 100 days, he's paved roads, refaced many public structures, parks, and other venues. And he's done a very good job of reaching out to his community. I was very happy to attend. As I was there, there was a long lengthy from 8:00 a.m. till 10:00 p.m. every day agenda. But I was very happy to start each day, meeting with the staff, doing the type of work that it takes to get to know the people you're going to be doing, hopefully, future collaborations with. So I had a wonderful visit with the staff. We had then toured their technical school. We had toured other facilities, their water plant. We toured, obviously, a children's home and some other social service venues that were run by some very caring and important people. And lastly, the second day, my wife and I were treated to a mass at a beautiful little old church in the old port. And that was a very good experience. And after that, we had, again, further meetings with economic development experts, investors, people from the community of Rocky Point, including those that were expatriates at the American Legion Hall. So they were very happy. And when I asked them, "Do you all feel safe in Rocky Point?" "You people who live here are members of this American Legion Hall," it was a resounding yes and "Viva Mexico." So I'm very happy to say that there's resonance, such as the former mayor, Prescott, that is the kind of retiree there, and Marlon Kirkinall, and many other expatriates who have done a lot of help, and I'm very proud of them for doing, including many that are in this room today. So in the end, I'd like to go ahead and read the proclamation, and I'd ask Felipe Garcia to help us with the interpretation of the proclamation. If you would not mind, sir, read it in Spanish for us. And I would hope that our guests would feel, as I did, such an honor to be part of their meeting, and appreciate your assistance in reading the proclamation.
And if I could ask all the board members, let's go down, and then Mr. Lizaraga, if you would come forward and we'll do the proclamation.
We ask for your services in public, Felipe. You're such a great guy behind the scenes. This is our tourism director for Mexico Initiatives, and he's the second in charge in the tourism here. I'm sure everybody knows Felipe Garcia. First, good morning, Fausto. Also, good morning. And please introduce our team. We'll introduce ourselves. And this is a really great occasion. We're thankful that you're here for me to help us over here.
Thank you for the opportunity for me here and to bring together this exchange. Joining us today, Mr. Ruben Sanchez. He's the director of economic development for the city of Rocky Point. The mayor of Rocky Point called me Sunday night, and he apologized for not being here. He got a call that he had to be in Mexico City today to sign an agreement to receive federal funds for a program. He says, "If I don't show up, that money will never show up in my communities." So it was, it was a matter of money, and what he says is his best wishes. He stands in the economic development and Fausto Soto, a very good friend with also some roots in our community. Her daughter lives here in Tucson, also with the city of Rocky.
U of A Graduate School of Architecture.
We're going to ask, first, we will just go ahead and ask Felipe to read the proclamation in Spanish. That's the one up on the board over here. If you don't find it, I'll be better if I can. Very, very good. Oh, yeah, this is like a nine-point con, so let me try.
You want to use the pink one?
Yeah. Let me try that one. So, sorry about that.
Muy buenos dias nuevamente a nuestros amigos de Puerto Penasco. Les vale la declaración que firma este fondado Pima. Considerando que la Junta de Supervisores del Fondo Pima se enorgullece de la formación de alianzas con entidades gubernamentales y no gubernamentales para apoyar relaciones de trabajo amistosas y promover beneficios para los habitantes de la región del Fondo Pima. Considerando que la Junta de Supervisores del Fondo Pima cree la importancia del movimiento de ciudades hermanas que se ha utilizado con éxito en los Estados Unidos, el cual incluye actualmente interacciones productivas entre la ciudad de Tucson y las ciudades de Puerto Penasco, Ciudad Obregón, El Sonora, Guadalajara, el estado Jalisco, y la ciudad de Mazatlán, en Senaroa. Y considerando que estas asociaciones establecen conexiones significativas que han mejorado la calidad de vida de las comunidades involucradas a través de la cooperación, la donación de equipo, intercambio de eneres de tecnología, sostenibilidad ambiental, cuerpos policiales, servicios de bomberos, respuesta a desastres y materiales peligrosos, salud pública y la prestación de atención médica. Y considerando que el Fondo Pima adoptó un plan de desarrollo económico de 2015 a 2017 que hace incapié en fomentar las oportunidades con México para incrementar la atracción de empresas en ambos lados de la frontera internacional que fortalecerá la industria maquiladora, facilitará las cadenas de suministro para materiales y servicios relacionados con la fabricación, mejorar el turismo médico y ampliar la capacidad de atracción de turismo en ambos países. Y considerando que el honorable alcalde Ernesto Kiko Munro de Puerto Penasco, Sonora, México, visitó a los miembros de la Junta de Supervisores y personal del Fondo Pima para expresar el deseo de establecer una relación productiva y mutuamente beneficiatoria con el Fondo Pima, y que el supervisor Ray Carroll visitó Puerto Penasco y se reunió con funcionarios locales con expresiones similares de amistad, buena voluntad de establecer una relación de beneficio mutuo. Y considerando que la lista de proyectos estratégicos para Puerto Penasco 2015, 2018 del alcalde Munro se alinea positivamente con el plan de desarrollo económico del Fondo Pima en la construcción de parques industriales para beneficio mutuo, fortalecer el ecoturismo, el turismo, la salud, y la exploración de servicios de desalización que mejore la prestación de servicios de agua para los residentes y visitantes, y mejorar los servicios de seguridad pública del destino turístico en esta región binacional, mejorar los mercados de Estados Unidos, México, y Canadá mediante la prosperidad económica a través de educación, salud, empleo, que impactará positivamente el continente América del Norte. Y considerando que el Fondo Pima está interesado en desarrollar un programa internacional de región hermana donde ambas entidades pueden abordar temas de interés mutuo para expandir la prosperidad económica en ambas regiones, considerando que muchos de los residentes y visitantes del Fondo Pima con frecuencia visitan las playas y centros turísticos en Puerto Penasco y contribuyen al desarrollo económico de la región, así como la demanda de servicios públicos de la ciudad, incluyendo los sistemas de agua, vertederos, y carreteras. Y considerando que muchos residentes de Sonora, incluidos de Puerto Penasco, visitan regularmente el Fondo Pima y contribuyen a la economía local y los intercambios culturales que son de interés para los residentes del Fondo. Por lo tanto, se proclama que el Fondo Pima, Arizona, se une a Puerto Penasco, Sonora, México para formar una región hermana. En base a la estructura de ciudades hermanas, por medio de la presente, la Junta de Supervisores y el alcalde de Puerto Penasco, Sonora, México, exhortan a sus respectivos equipos a intercambiar información, cooperar entre sí, y desarrollar conjuntamente una relación de trabajo mutuamente satisfactoria entre las dos regiones, diseñada para aumentar las oportunidades económicas y la prosperidad. Aprobada y adoptada el segundo día de febrero del año 2016.
Thank you so much, Felipe. And again, we want to thank the team who worked up in Penasco, who was very helpful. I'm sure that one of these gentlemen would like to respond. Fausto.
Well, this is an honor. And the only thing that I can say is, we are so grateful with this. And I can say only thank you. Thank you very much. And we are really together doing a lot of stuff.
I'd like to take the opportunity also to thank you. Like I said, we have very common goods here, a lot of people in this region. Family, cultural, economic, school, roommate. And so I think it's a great opportunity to develop. We hope we have a lot in common, or many, many thousand seniors, so let's take one back. Thank you very much.
Sister cities are represented here. They had a wonderful reception. All the opportunity that I had to meet, really work together, was equal here for Kiko Munro. And he says, "Thank you again." It was a great reception. All the people who hosted Kiko and his team up here just had great, great comments. It's worth it. You all did. Thank you again for being here. No, I think they're good. The comment I made often in Mexico was, "Alas, musta sa, despacio, por favor." But I didn't do that because, obviously, it's long, and it was an intense project for you to read it. Thank you very much, Felipe, for doing that. I also have great thanks again for all the wonderful people of Rocky Point who worked, as we said, many times on the trip to host us. Not just expatriates, but tourists and medical tourists as well. So thank you again. We have one person that's here today, Jackie, who is going to be receiving after this a certificate for all your help and a bouquet for all the work. She came down as a volunteer, again, not at taxpayer expense, and took over 1,200 photos, and really enjoyed each and everything, from the Navy Yard to the children's home. So thank you, Jackie, for being here. She's a student at Thunderbird International College University, right? Thunderbird's Business School. And she is now conducting an exchange with her students. They're going down to study a project there, and they're going to make recommendations. It's international business. So in advance, thank you for that. I'm sure it'll be helpful to the lucky business that's going to be profiled and worked with in Mexico. I think you should get a round of applause. I guess, brother, this is the way things begin, the first step. And it's much better to build bridges and walls. Thank you again, gentlemen.
I just wanted to say thank you to Ray for all his work on this project and Pima County staff who worked on it. Yes, I know you worked very hard on it too, and thank you. And Frank has been involved in Sister Cities for a long time. But really, the truth is, is that, you know, since time immemorial, our families and people have been intertwined, from the first Americans to the people who inhabit this region now. And that's something we should be really proud of, and we should work together to try and make our relationships better, our business relationships more profitable. And frankly, tone down some of the ugly rhetoric that we hear about the borderlands and between peoples and start thinking about how we really share things and that we really care for each other in an important way. And I think that's the better side of all of this, and something that we should all be very proud of. And, you know, as far as holding up that proclamation while he was reading it, you know, it reminded me of something my third-grade teacher said. Everybody needs a job they can do.
De parte de la Junta de Supervisores del Fondo Pima, les agradecemos mucho que cuidaron al supervisor Ray Carroll. Lo vimos detrás de una camioneta de policía. I think no one will be able to tell what was happening, but I'd like to say that you stayed here, the relations in our two regions. And, obviously, we're going to have a relationship for a long, long time, which has assisted for a long time in our regions. Muchas gracias.
Since my tenure on the board, my focus has been on economic development. And I want to thank the Reverend for his invocation. Ray, you've already said that it's federal to build bridges, not walls. We have to understand that economic development doesn't stop at borders. It doesn't, we are a sister region, and we are looking forward to doing just as we do.
One last picture.
One more. Let's take a little picture. With the proclamation? Come on, man, you'll look like some prince.
I understand Ray's going to be on Sábado de Gigantes.
Don Francisco, Ray Muda.
Okay. Supervisor Carroll, once again, thank you for your advocacy. Hopefully, this will be a very productive relationship.
Thank you very much again, Madam Chair and board members. I do appreciate all the hospitality that we can get. Hopefully, we'll see each other for lunch later.
All right, we are now going to move on to the regular agenda. We are to call to the public. Want to remind everybody, you have three minutes. Please, back to your seats, hostility. Dennis Curry.
Good morning, board. I'm Dennis Curry from Star Valley. I'm appealing for a supervisor's request to allow our Star Valley community to continue growing. While the course decided disagreements between the county and the developer, this agreement has been the inclusion of Minna Verde, his developer responsible, in the northern part of Star Valley, the Star Valley project to Valencia Road, as well as the interpretation of Section 11D of the Star Valley specific plan, which was codified in 1987. The Star Valley specific plan also stipulated that an acceptable master plan be recorded within five years of the December 1987 specific plan approval. Section D states, "Impart a transportation improvements financing plans and transportation system implementation plans for the specific plan area shall be required before any subdivision plan is approved." It was literally impossible for the developer to be successful on meeting that five-year timeline, since it was a whole nine years after the Star Valley specific plan was codified before Title 19 was created, providing transportation funding for the Pima County benefit areas and that plaits could likely be released. It was another 12 years before the actual project's scope and cost were identified to the creation of the various benefit areas around the county that formally described the roadway improvements that would be funded by Title 19. On the surface, the chronology is a problem. Given that Minna Verde was never in the original project plan, there had to be subsequent discussions with the developer in those years in attempt to clarify responsibility. The October 2014 settlement letter to the developer proposing an additional $1,500 impact fee over and above the $4,900 fee currently assessed to pay for Minna Verde, taxes the homeowners anyway. And now, with Minna Verde completed to Valencia Road, the traffic problem is temporarily solved, mitigating traffic issues when approved, the approved plaits are released. By not releasing these plaits, it only serves to curtail Star Valley. We desperately need the commercial development, which will provide much-needed local jobs for our teens and others. We also need the convenience that grocery, drugstores, and restaurants will provide. Without those rooftops and the continued cloud that hangs over Star Valley, the commercial development will languish. For the county, millions of dollars in impact fees simply sit on the table as developed and installed, further delaying future transportation projects. We ask you once again to help us move forward respectfully.
Thank you, Mr. Curry. Jerry Otobani.
My name is Jerry Otoboni and I live in the North Valley. I was very impressed with Tim Steller's Arizona Daily Star article. He wrote about the latest Balloon Doggo, which is a very risky project. It is so risky that no one else wanted to finance the Balloon Doggo, using taxpayer credits, except Mr. Huckleberry. The voters of Pima County already voted against the Balloon Doggo as part of the bonds, but Mr. Huckleberry could care less about we, the taxpayers, and they should be financing themselves. Perhaps this is a cheaper for them, but a bad deal for the taxpayers. I had a laugh when the article listed the New Mexico company in competition for the Balloon Doggo, especially when their taxpayers paid $250 million for their own spaceport that was losing money. I heard on the radio that they wanted their taxpayers to donate more money, so you can see what we have to look forward to. By the way, I have a bridge in Brooklyn that I'd love to sell to you all. According to Tim Steller's article, Mr. Huckleberry could acquire another building we don't need. Mr. Huckleberry looks to be a little bit out of control, so we need to replace these four supervisors who have been here, it seems like decades, who have kept him as administrator and his huge salary of $320 plus benefits before they vote to give him more money. Now he's the second-highest paid in the United States and the fifth poorest city in the United States. Sounds like Mr. Huckleberry and you four. I need to go. Thank goodness it's an election year. Thank you.
Christopher Cole.
I'm Bill Christopher Cole, First Flash Chair, Pima County Department of Labor. I apologize that I wasn't here last week to speak on this issue, unfortunately. I was laid ill by whatever it was that was going around. $15 million for balloon toys for the wealthy, but there is, according to everything I've been able to find, no demand for. I have not found a business plan, as from what I understand, this Board of Supervisors was not provided with a business plan. Correct me if I'm wrong. This Board of Supervisors failed its fiduciary responsibilities for the taxpayers of Pima County. I can see only two reasons for this $15 million to this balloon toy company. One, there are no potholes in the atmosphere that have to be filled in before this can advance. And two, Mark Kelly and his cronies are politically well-connected, with Mr. Kelly being married to Gabrielle Giffords. And so, the Pima County Board of Supervisors leaped at the chance to provide money for these politically well-connected cronies. Since it seems that there is little if any demand for this service and little if any chance that the Pima County government is going to be repaid of this $15 million, it would appear that this $15 million is a gift to Mr. Kelly in violation of the gift clause. I don't expect the Pima County attorney to investigate, because any investigation by a member of the Pima County government, of the Pima County government, would be suspect. I think this is something that the State Attorney General should investigate, and perhaps, just perhaps, criminal charges may be filed. I thank you.
Raquel Barina. Raquel?
I mispronounced your name, your last name, I'm sorry. Hi, my name is Raquel Barina. I live north of the university, and I represent about 30 lot owners. These are just the lot owners that I have on my mailing list. There's probably about twice as many more I need to do another mass mailing and try to get them on my mailing list. And this is the Sycamore Vista subdivision. It's on the far southeast side near Suarita Road and Howton Road. And it was a paper subdivision built in 19... Papered out in the 1960s. There were never any roads or any utilities brought there. And I want to remind these guys here that Pima County actually owns a lot in Unit 10 in the subdivision. And you've owned this lot quite a while, I suppose. Somebody that bought the lot in the '70s gave it to the county to give it, and I hope you don't sell it, and I hope you keep on to this, and I hope you guys ask the HOA, which is headed by Stephen Russo, a lawyer here in Tucson, who, with his friends, bought the vacant lots from the bankruptcy. It was the National Bank of Arizona, it was $35 million. The biggest loss in the National Bank of Arizona history. And Mr. Russo, pick these up. And I want you guys, since you've got an interest in this, to ask him, why is there a $6,000 lien on each of these lots? There's been no dirt turn, and I'll tell you why. It's because they had to bring water, like, two or three miles, two miles, to... They don't even have water on there. There is absolutely no dirt turned on your lot there that you own, but there's a $6,000 lien that doesn't expire. You know, I mean, there's no statute of limitations. It's probably about $12,000 now, because this lien's been on there for more than 10 years, and this is an unconscionable HOA. And my lawyer, I hired a lawyer, I spent my entire life savings, more than $90,000, fighting Mr. Russo. That's what a bad person he is. And I want to also know, he is the attorney for the Pima County Industrial Development Authority. I would like you guys to tell me when the next meeting is. They're supposed to... What am I supposed to do? Come down here and look at the clerk of the boards? Notice every day? They have meetings anytime. They just call a meeting and they call CC Cruz and Virginia Y. Rand or U. Rand. You know, I'm good friends with...
Virginia and U.
Yeah, right. You know, I used to help out a lot to get Democrats elected. You know, I was working with John Franco, you know, and I even helped Ed Moore get elected. In fact, Ed Moore's name is on my... The deed to my house, because the county got liens on it, and, you know, I paid the liens off and got the house with his names on it. So, you know, I'd like you guys to tell me when the next meeting of the Pima County Industrial Development Board is, so that I can go there and tell CC Cruz and Virginia Y. Rand, sorry. When, you know, I want to tell them what a rotten person I am, I have to credit this guy, Steve Russo, is for doing this to me and all these other people. Thank you, God bless you.
Thank you, and I think that the clerk can notify you. All right. Brian Pickle.
Good morning, Madam Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Huckleberry. My name is Brian Pickle. I'm a resident of incorporated Pima County, and I'd like to take my time this morning to speak to this morning's article in the Arizona Daily Star regarding the state's ongoing effort to balance the budget on the backs of the counties, particularly as it relates to roads and the potential that we're going to have more herd sweeps. Based on information on both Pima County DOT and Maricopa County DOT's website, Maricopa County has approximately 2,500 miles of empty roads. Pima County has approximately 2,200 miles of empty roads, a difference of 300 miles or 15.6 percent. According to the State Treasurer's website, Pima County's turf dispersments for 2015 from January 1st through December 31st were $41,572,666.44. Maricopa County got $99,615,691.22, a significant disparity to take care of 300 more miles of roads. Both of the department's entire operating budget comes from turf dispersments and VLT funds. The VLT distribution that goes to each county, Pima County's was $13,595,968.86. Maricopa County's was $53,93,311.6. So, the total money's going to Pima County DOT is $55,168,629.30. The total going to Maricopa County is $152,707,28. A significant disparity to take care of additional 300 miles of roads. If you're looking for a problem to fix, fix this one. Everything I've seen when it comes to revenue distribution, be it income tax, sales tax, turf money, VLT tax, every one of them is designed to benefit Maricopa County. A comment that Mr. Huckleberry said in the paper this morning, while no payment source for the governor's new EPS border task force, no revenue stream has been identified yet, don't be surprised if that's a herd sweep, and be even less surprised if the four border counties are the ones that have their funds swept. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your insightful comments. Jay Wells. We... Jay, you weren't here when we announced that that item had been pulled from the agenda, so if you want to speak now.
Chair, this is Jay Wells, Rito Park Foundation. First of all, I want to thank you for your vote at the last session. We're busy, busy, busy getting ready for the races. The temporary barns have gone up. We're just at hectic pace trying to get the horsemen in. The horses should start riding at the track tomorrow. I did come today and understand that that review had been pulled, but I do want to report back to you that since I was last in front of you, I have met with Mr. Schmidt, and we've had productive conversations.
You both are still alive.
We're both still alive. And I will say that one of the things that we worked on and we asked the State Attorney General to make a rule on is that there is a queue for live racing at the racetrack at 7:00. And so, when we sat down together at lunch, I said, "What is your day like?" And he said, "Well, we start early in the morning, and we're usually out there by 1:00." And I said, "Well, right now, we start at 1:00 because we can't run past 7:00." From the Department of Racing's perspective, they think that that can be worked out, where we could run later than 7:00, which would allow us to delay the post-time. In other words, soccer in the morning, horse racing in the afternoon, and that seems to be a powerful compromise to all of us. We think that in the long run, it's our vision at Rito Park Foundation for a multi-use vision for Rito Park, that Tucson Soccer Academy and the other units could be nothing but a very powerful ally and indeed a partner. So, I just wanted to thank you again for all of the consideration we have. We do hope that we come back to you once we've worked that out and bring you a contract that is something that every one of you could endorse. There'll be modifications to that, we think, to address those. But again, thanks. Hope to see you out at the races. It's going to be a lot of fun. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Josephina, you said you do not wish to speak. Is that correct? I just want to verify.
Well, I would like to.
Oh, please come forward.
Buenos dias, I'm Josephina Fernandez, and I'm glad you called the line. It's taken long, but I wanted especially to come here to thank you. Thank you for your decision on signing the contract along with the team and to remind you that it is an economic opportunity for many people, especially for humble people, dressed with people. That's their way of life, and it's been since time immemorable. So, I thank you and look forward to politics being here and everyone making a long. Gracias.
Gracias. That concludes our call to the public. We have three executive session items, two on the regular agenda, one on the agenda. I entertain a motion to move into executive session. Motion in a second. Objections, hearing none. Motion carries. And we convene a regular session of the song of the gamble.
Just an example, I know, Marion County is urban, strong, county border, county border, and it's all unincorporated. The city of Indiana is unincorporated, is not Pima County. It's partly merged into a metropolitan area, but it's a different one. But it is all unincorporated, a lot of places that... It's not... It's incorporated, same as Pima County's incorporated. Right? The county is not incorporated. It is a subdivision of the state of Indiana, not incorporated in any way, shape, or form. The city, it is, right, it is a main urban area that has no government. Marion County has the government, but...
Which journalism class? You having fun?
Very well incorporated areas.
You haven't stopped there. Oh, there she is. What kind of story are you going to write? Oh, okay. Not the other way around. That's not kosher. Okay, it looks like everybody's returned, so we will reconvene our regular meeting. And Counselor, we have three items.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item six on the regular agenda is an executive session item on McDonald versus Pima County. Court case set for trial later this month. County attorney seeks direction on whether to proceed as discussed in executive session.
What's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, will we proceed as instructed in the executive session? As discussed in executive session, excuse me.
Motion in a second. Are there any objections? I object. One objection. Any further objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Quarter one. Counselor, next item.
Item seven on the regular agenda is an executive session item on CHN Holdings versus Santa Cruz in Pima County. County attorney seeks direction on whether to proceed with the proposed settlement agreement.
What's pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, will we proceed, board, with the settlement agreement discussed in executive session?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any objections? Hearing none. Motion carries. Next item, next and final one.
Item two on the agenda is an executive session item on the notice of claim filed by Red Mountain Group. County attorney seeks direction on whether to proceed with the proposed settlement agreement. County attorney seeks direction on whether to proceed with the proposed statute of limitations tolling agreement.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, will we move forward with the statute of limitations extension for the tolling agreement discussed in executive sessions?
There's motion in a second on the floor, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Brings us back to the regular agenda. We are now on item eight. Board of Supervisors sitting, has other boards, in this case, Blood and Call District Board, on date, is a hearing, advocate mitigation. What's the pleasure of the board on this item?
Madam Chair, Supervisor Miller. I move to approve accepting a contribution to mitigation banking funds in the amount of $1,943.75 on-site mitigation for property located at 4751 West Orazos.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. We now move on to the Board of Supervisors sitting as a board. And item nine, approval of consent calendar. What's the pleasure of the board on this? Does anybody wish to divide the question?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I wish to divide the question and vote on item number 22 separately and have separate discussion.
Item 22?
Yes.
What's the pleasure of the board on the remaining items on the consent calendar?
Madam Chair, I'll hold the remainder of consent.
Second, Madam Chair.
Motion in a second, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries, moving on to item 22, Supervisor Miller.
Madam Chair, my question on this is regarding the contract with Mr. Michael Ritzuk. He was the wastewater department director for many years and now we still have him on the payroll. And I brought this question up the last time this came up. And my question is, at what point do we allow, or do we direct the current wastewater management director to take over the department without further assistance from the former wastewater management director?
Has nobody here from wastewater, Mr. Huckleberry?
Yes, Madam Chair and Supervisor Miller. This is the final term for Mr. Ritzuk's contract. There's no additional funds being allowed. And his services is really related to the reposition of the now shuttered existing Roger O'Leary Wastewater Treatment Facility and trying to repurpose it for other purposes, including agriculture and related matters.
Okay, so this is the final part of the law?
This is it, yes.
All right, with that, I will move the appointment of item number 22.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on then to item 10, appointment of constable for precinct three. We have one applicant and Jose El Gonzalez. I don't think I saw him here today, but just in case, if it's you or you're here. All right, I am going to move the appointment since we have one applicant and I have talked with individuals in Aho. Mr. Gonzalez has former law enforcement experience. So I'm going to move that we appoint Jose El Gonzalez as constable for precinct three.
Second.
Motion in a second, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to development services, item 11, final plan with assurances. What's the pleasure of the board on this item?
Madam Chair, move ahead.
Motion in a second, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to natural resources parks and rep in resolution 2016-4. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the dock park renaming and resolution number 2016-4.
Motion in a second, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to regional wastewater reclamation, items 13, A and B. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, I move item 13, A and B.
Motion in a second, any discussion, any?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I just have a question, is this for the Happy Rooster for failing to submit a quarterly self-monitoring report within the four to five days after the period? And it appears the citation was issued very quickly. Is this standard procedure and is this the first time that this restaurant has done this?
Madam Chair and Supervisor Miller, no, this is a long-term issue. They've been previously placed on permit reminders and staff has continued to call with no responses.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I will go ahead and approve this as well.
Okay, there's motion on the floor, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to hearings, parentize license and permits, items 14 and 15. Is there, these are hearings, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address us on these items at this time? If not, I have some comments on item 15 before we move on these items. This is pertaining to Wild, or to Oasis at Wild Horse Ranch. I'm not sure, seek counselor's advice. This particular agent, the applicant did not pay the fine associated justice court administrator. Based on the information in the sheriff's report, the applicant and the justice court administrator following has been confirmed. The applicant did not pay the fine associated with this case and was turned over to collections. As of 1/26/16, the applicant still does not pay the fine. So my question to counselor is, can we approve contingent on him paying the fine? Is that a thing appropriate?
Madam Chair, I'd also note that the applicant is here in a room.
Oh, okay.
Yes, he was.
Go ahead, please, this is a hearing, so please, can you address the issue associated with the?
Sure, absolutely.
Perfect.
It actually was paid ahead of time, I forgot.
You got it and paid it, all right.
So that was a misunderstanding of payment schedule.
Okay.
That's the pay, not then each of them, licenses, 2001.
Okay, great.
No incidents.
Great, thank you. With that, I'm going to move to close public hearing on these items and approve them. Second, motion in a second, any objections? Hearing none, Supervisor.
Would you please note the sheriff's report associated with that?
We'll amend the motion to note that. And also note that he paid the fine.
Yes.
Okay. All right, if there are no objections, we'll still amend. All right, we go move on to development services, item 16, unfinished business. This is a hearing for rezoning P-15 RZ-00009, McGee Cuomo Development Association LLC on North LaToya Boulevard. Staff report, quickly.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, before you's request for rezoning approximately .88 acres from TR to the CB1 zone. Public comment today, staff has received two emails of support and one letter of concern. Certainly has not triggered any type of supermajority. The commission and staff are both recommending approval with conditions, the properties located outside the Mivimere, the end conservation land system. And that concludes staff's report.
All right, let me see, we have one letter of concern. Is there anyone in the audience? We'll need you to fill out a speaker card, so that you're welcome to make a presentation at this time.
Fill out the card, I'll leave it open to the three persons. If you're going to speak to the other.
No, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Please state your name.
My name is Ira Lee Gates. I believe this property makes part of this application. Good morning, Madam Chair and fellow members of the board supervisors for Mr. Huckleberry. As the owner of 12 acres adjacent to this zone being replaced, I'm here in support of this project for a couple reasons. All of these properties in the area have been developing since the 1980s and have experienced several recessionary periods. With the recent completion of significant transportation improvements in the area, these last few remaining parcels are ready to be built out and become an economic asset to the community. This rezoning case has prompted me to initiate a rezoning request for my acreage. I expect to file a zoning request that is compatible with the land uses proposed with this and today's request and land uses on three sides of my property. But it will be imposed by the neighbors across Como Drive. I expect to work with the homeowners and eventually adjust my plans to mitigate impacts on them. Why is this important today? I have worked with today's applicant to secure access to my property to replace the LaToya access that was taken by the county with the recent transportation improvements. In that regard and related to today's case, I've tried to secure alternative access to my property by purchasing the rights use easement that exists and does not exist, which serves this property, lot number four, the subject of today's rezoning case. And also it serves lots three and five within this development. The new owners of lot five are now being bad actors as they are maintaining the easement that I've purchased has now been foreclosed on by them. If they are correct, my property in lots three and four and five apparently have no unencumbered access. I truly believe this will be resolved. I support today's request because the success of this project can have a very positive effect on the economy in the area and help mitigate transportation and community infill issues that will arise with my pending zoning application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish to make presentation at this time? Can we get you to move so we can hear you?
Yes, sorry about that. So we are requesting a rezoning to CB2 with conditions that staff has recommended. We support those conditions and just ask that the board's.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak before we close the hearing? If not, what's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair.
Supervisor Miller.
I wish to close the public hearing and move to approve P-15 RZ-00009, McGee Cuomo Development Association LLC, the North LaToya Boulevard rezoning for a rezoning of approximately .88 acres from the SR Transitional Dome to CB2 General Business Zone for office, restaurant, and retail uses as recommended for approval with standard and special conditions by the Planning and Zoning Commission and as recommended for approval with standard and special conditions as recommended by staff.
Is there a second? Motion in a second, any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to item 17, hearing traffic arguments, is a hearing. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to just, to address us on this item at this time? If not, we're going to move to close public hearing and approve item 17 and arguments number 2016-9. Second, motion in a second, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on then to the addendum agenda. We are now, item three has been drawn. And so we are on item four, real property. What's the pleasure of the board on item four, surplus property? I'll move the item. Motion in a second, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Moving on to item five. What's the pleasure of the board on this item, county attorney?
Madam Chair, I move approval.
Motion, I'll second. Is there any objection? Hearing none, motion carries, moving on. Agreement items six and seven, what's the pleasure of the board on these items?
Madam Chair, I will move to approve item number six and item number seven.
I'll second, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries, we're in real property, items eight, nine, 10, and 11. What's the pleasure of the board on these items?
Madam Chair, I will move to approve item number eight, number nine, number 10, and number 11.
I'll second, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. Items 12 and 13, the grant application acceptance. What's the pleasure of the board on these items?
Madam Chair, I'll move to items. Item 12 and 13.
Second, are there any objections? Hearing none, motion carries, and finally items 14.
I'll move items 14 and 15.
Second. Motion in a second, any objections? Hearing none, motion carries. That concludes today's meeting. We will see you February 16. All right, and if there are no objections, then this meeting stands adjourned. And again, our next meeting is February 16.